Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, April 7th, 2015. Now please rise for the pledged ladies.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you, and if we could, I'd like to take a moment of silence to reflect on our duties as the Board of Selectmen interacting with the town and also for the safety of our men and women in the armed services, both overseas and in the United States.
I'd like to note that this meeting is being recorded, pursuant to Mass General Laws, this meeting is being recorded by ESOL mount cable access and also by the Selectmen's office, and I have to ask if anyone else in the room is recording the meeting. Seeing no one, we can proceed. The first part of our meeting is our two liquor license hearings. I'm going to again announce that this isn't a license hearing, I notice you all signed in, and our first, what I'll do is I'll have the clerk read the first notice of the first hearing, and then we'll invite our guests up.
Dear Mr. Keshu, the Board of Selectmen acting in its capacity as the licensing authority will conduct a hearing regarding the status of the liquor license for the establishment doing business at Nadeem's Fish and Grill located at 60 Shaker Road, as previously discussed with you at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on February 17th, 2015. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 7th, 2015, at 6:00 PM in the media room at the Council of Aging located at 328 North Main Street. The Board of Selectmen shall consider testimony regarding the status of the license and reserve the right to take any actions up to and including revocation. You may bring such representation as you wish. Please be advised that the Board of Selectmen intends to discuss this matter whether or not you are present. The Board of Selectmen asks you make every effort to attend this hearing and to contact this office to confirm by calling (413) 525-5400, extension 1100. Very truly yours, Board of Selectmen, Paul Federici, Chairman.
Thank you. And now I'd like to invite up Nadeem Keshu, John Droste, and, I don't know, Jim, if you want to come up?
Sure.
Are we on this? It's a tough handshake here.
Hi, John.
Are we, Jim?
I can reach.
Now, just before we start, I don't think this matters at all, but I just want to bounce this off of you, that actually John and I do have a business relationship together. I perform services for him, and their firm is our legal representation, so...
We do have a conflict. You should not participate.
Wonderful. There you go. All right. Well, you didn't bring my Zooma map. Excuse me.
Yeah, I should have brought them.
Okay, Nick?
(inaudible) But you can make a decision as to whether you want to attend the hearing.
I wasn't at the meeting on 17th, so I was concerned about that. What is this?
My report to the Board that this is a hearing in follow-up of finding out the status of a proposed or in-the-works transfer of the license and, I believe, the entire business from Nadeem's Grill to an entity called Pier 525. At the meeting in summary, and correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, that the Board had given some time at the conclusion of that meeting, which again was not a hearing on the 17th of February, but to allow for time to pass and for the two business entities to come to an agreement and then therefore submit a transfer, which was the idea at the time. It's been some time now, and it has also come to the attention of the office that there's been some advertising, at least one instance of Pier 525 advertising as the operator, appears to be the operator, at that location, although the license does still remain under Mr. Keshu's name, so there does not appear to have been any kind of transfer that this office is aware of. So this is an opportunity now for the Board to determine what is the status of this location, who is the owner, who's the license holder, that sort of thing, who is going to be a proposed license holder, et cetera.
Let me guess the floor, Chair.
Sure. My name's John Droste, I'm with Fitzgerald Attorneys at Law with offices in 46 Center Square in East Slough Meadow, and I'm here on behalf of Pier 525 LLC and its members, Richard Dolling, and one of the matters, as this was before you before, to find out what the status of what was going on with the transfer. Rich is working at the restaurant, which is still operated under Jan Corporation, which is owned by Nadeem, and they're fully aware that Nadeem is the owner, that Rich is just an employee, wasn't aware of any previous advertising, but the process that we're going through now, it's been determined that Rich and his new company wants to buy it, wants to go through with the process. We have a draft purchase and sale agreement. The only thing that's holding us up now from filing is that there's relatively recent, there's been a new regulation or proceeding concerning taxes and good standing certificates. In the past, before you would, in order to file a liquor license transfer, which this is, you would just file the application paperwork and then wait for the ABCC to let you know whether or not there's a Department of Revenue issue. We are, but nowadays, now the procedure is you have to submit a good standing certificate with the application. So it's come to our attention that there's some filings that are being, that need to be done, and they are being done, and we're also working on the financing. We had a, we had some financing that fell through, and now we are securing other financing, which we're, we are told will have at the end of the month, early May. So that's the process. As soon as we get the tax matter situated, we will file the application. And unfortunately, the issue is you have, if there's any outstanding taxes, you have to pay it upfront, and, you know, that's part of the financing that we have to come through and obtain.
Just for clarification, the financing, the tax liability, we've been paid by the current borrower, and you're representing the purchaser?
Right, but again, we're representing the purchaser, but we're going to have to work some sort of arrangement to pay it, because if there's outstanding taxes that they can't pay, we're going to have to come up somehow and pay the taxes. That's part of an arrangement for them, you know, whether it's a loan or a...
Your client is assuming the responsibility of the tax liability by the prior operator?
Well, I don't know if he wants to say he's assuming the liability, because he doesn't want to, but if, it's as part of the transfer, in order for them to go forward and the taxes have to get paid, if this is the only way to pay him, then he's willing to pay that obligation.
Could I suggest, the issue that the Board has been wrestling with is the uncleareness that, I don't know if you, I don't even know if that's a word, but we'll make it a word for the purpose of this hearing, of the status of the people who are operating the business now and the license holder.
Right.
And at the last meeting, I think the license holder indicated that your client and his people were employees of the license holder.
Yep.
So that being the case, is it fair to say that that situation is going to continue between now and the time that there is an application before the Board for a transfer of the license?
Well, I think that'll continue until a new license is issued in the new name of Pier 525.
Okay. And so could we ask you, as part of your due diligence in getting ready for this transfer, just so the Board has a good record, to get from the license holder an affidavit to the Board that he is the owner and that the operators aren't acting and are being treated as employees of his, of the license holder?
Yeah, I've, you know, again, I'm counsel here for Pier 525, the proposed, so...
But you're paying their taxes, so I figured you might be able to get that affidavit.
Right, I'm sure, we'll try it, and Nadeem is here.
I have no objection, that's a good idea.
Okay. I can prepare it, and when would you want that in?
I'm assuming that would be satisfactory to the Board. The Board's just looking for documentation that the license holder is in fact the person who's responsible for and employing the people who are currently serving alcohol and food at that site.
I, Nadeem said that's not going to be a problem, no problem.
Just an affidavit, read the ownership and operation of the facility.
Yep, I will, we'll get that into you.
As soon as possible.
Yep.
Okay. Because you asked when, and we didn't clarify, so...
You listened, and we'll probably prepare it, have it signed, end of this week, early next week.
Yes. May I ask a question?
Sure.
Or point of clarification?
Sure.
Through Lab Selectmen to Attorney Droste, the comment that I made during my explanation relative to advertisement was that it was brought to the Board of Selectmen's Office attention that there was a Facebook posting, which, that was an advert, that to me was the advertisement I was referring to, that states, invites people to come to Pier 525 for Easter brunch.
Okay.
And so the questions were coming into the Board of Selectmen's Office about, you know, that just, and that was brought to the attention of the office even, you know, after, I believe, the hearing was set that I spoke with Mr. Keshu about, what, two weeks ago or so, anyway. But, so that kind of advertising or posting brought some questions to the Board of Selectmen's Office.
Okay.
So perhaps you can correct that?
Yeah, we'll make sure that that's not...
Sure.
That's fine.
That's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, it's difficult to see on that copy.
This is what we're...
Okay. It was on their Facebook page.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Does that...
I want to ask if any, it's a public hearing, so...
Oh. Is there anybody from the public that would like to have a say in this hearing? Okay, nobody? Nobody? Okay, so then, you're good?
You'll have that to us by the end of the week or...
Yeah, hopefully, I'm going to, I'll prepare it, have it prepared tomorrow.
A date for it?
If we're able to get it signed, and, you know, I could write it here right now, but it'd probably look nicer if it's...
Yeah. Well, if we could have, by Friday?
I don't know what the Board would consider the reason.
When do you want to have the affidavit?
By the end of the week, if we...
By the end of the week, so Friday?
Yeah.
And Friday's date is the 10th.
10th.
So by the close of business on the 10th.
Okay.
Okay. That concludes that business. So we're closing this hearing.
Counsel, I think I...
Counsel, do you have anything that you want to say? No? No? Okay, so this hearing is closed?
Then I would make a motion, suggest the Board to make a motion that based on the testimony given and the intended filing of the affidavit, that the Board is satisfied that the license holder is in fact in operation of the site.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have... No. We'll have to wait for Paul to come back in to do the next one, he doesn't have a conflict on that one, I don't think.
About 6:15?
Welcome back.
We just sold your house.
We don't want any grandbodies.
Okay. Do we have to read the addresses?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so either, okay.
Our next person isn't here, right?
But it says whether or not you're here or not.
Yeah, we just proceed with the reading of the notice for the hearing without anyone here. Okay. If you don't mind.
No problem. Dear Ms. Romito, the Board of Selectmen acting in its capacity as the licensing authority will conduct a hearing regarding the status of your, of the liquor license for the establishment doing business as Romito &amp; Sons Incorporated located at 21 North Main Street, as previously discussed with you at the Board's meeting on February 17th, 2015. This hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 7th, 2015, at 6:15 in the media room at the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street. The Board of Selectmen shall consider testimony regarding the status of the license and reserve the right to take up to, excuse me, reserve the right to take any action up to and including revocation. You may bring such representation as you wish. Be advised that the Board of Selectmen intends to discuss this matter whether or not you are present. The Board of Selectmen asks that you make every effort to attend this hearing and to contact this office by, to confirm by calling (413) 525-5400, extension 1100. Very truly yours, Board of Selectmen, Paul F., Paul F., Paul L. Federici, Chairman, C.C., Attorney James Chan.
Thank you. Do you mind coming up again, Jim? Thank you, sir. So now we are, obviously, we're all here, and they aren't, and I hate to say this, but if Jim Channing had showed up, I would have had the same problem I did with John Droste.
Oh, no.
Well, the situation is, I received a call, as I related to the Administrator yesterday, last Friday, from Mr. Channing, who is in House Counsel for Pride. Mr. Channing informed me that Pride had no further interest in going forward with the acquisition of that license.
Okay.
So it falls back to Romito's if they're going to continue to seek to operate or to have a license at that site. We're back to where we started in January, which is, they need to file a complete package of materials, including insurances and the other materials that were determined necessary by the Board's Office in looking at the license before they're going to issue the renewal. So...
But if I may, can they proceed when they effectively have a license but no facility? Because that facility was sold to Pride a couple of years ago.
Well, Pride owns it, but apparently Romito still operates the food service that's there. So they have a site, I don't, and that's one of the other questions, I don't know, I'm assuming that they have a lease or a month-to-month tenancy, but that is one of the conditions that the Board needs to find in your licensing file, that the license holder has the right to occupy the premises that you're issuing the license to.
So should we, from here, instead of having the licenses hanging out there, should we ask of them to either produce a lease showing that the Romitos still run, because that's, I, this isn't official, but that's not the impression I'm under, and let's put it that way, but I don't know every, I don't know of any deals, you know, deals that have been made, so...
So, but it appears that they're still occupying the premises in some fashion, so some type of evidence, either a letter from the landlord that they are a month-to-month tenancy or whatever it would be, and the problem with that is if the landlord decides to issue them an eviction notice, then they have no place and they're going to lose their license, or it's going to be in abeyance until they can find a buyer for it. My suggestion probably to the Board to simplify the issues is to, one, request evidence that they have a right to occupy the premises that they have, but then, two, to put together with that request, a letter indicating all of the, restating all of the deficiencies with the application to the extent that we have it now, and indicate that if you intend to open or to utilize the license, or to maintain the license, you're going to have to comply with these requirements, otherwise the Board may revoke the license.
I thought we made that clear the last time, too.
I think you did, but the issue the last time, and this is only out of fairness, and I'm not saying out of fairness, but my recollection was that the representative for Romito's was relaying to the Board that this license was being transferred to Pride, and they're operating under that assumption. The city, the town, only learned on Friday that Pride was no longer interested in that site. I don't know whether Romito's knew that before Friday or not, and it's up to the Board, but from the last hearing that I saw representative here, they were working under the impression that this was a transfer that was going through, and that's why they weren't doing anything. And I think if you give them a couple of weeks to clarify, notice that it's not happening, we're told, and if you're going to keep the license, or think you're going to keep it, you need to get this information to us, and if you don't, then the Board can make a decision in a couple of weeks. I mean, you could probably do something now if you chose to, but that wasn't really a license hearing that you were holding at that point in time. So my suggestion would be to continue the hearing for two weeks, or to whenever you feel is the next appropriate meeting, given your schedules. Ask for that material to come in, have a representative come in and explain the material or where they stand, and if they're not here or they don't submit all the material, then the Board can make a decision what you want to do with the license.
I thought Mrs. Romito was going to talk to Pride. They must have told her that they weren't, didn't want nothing to do with it.
I would assume that, but I can't...
And you think they would be in at this meeting, one or the other?
Yeah, I would assume that, but I can't, I don't have any firsthand knowledge of that, Mr. Gorman.
So it sounds like...
I think if you follow the additional couple of weeks or three, whatever...
Well, our next meeting's three weeks from today, so...
Yeah, it gives, it gives them a reasonable time to come back, and you can't be faulted for...
Trumping the gun, so to speak.
Yeah.
Okay. So what we want to request, we want to send, obviously, the Romitos or Rosemary a letter requesting proof that they have a working relationship with the landlord, and also that they're interested, that if they're interested in keeping the license, they have to, A, prove that, and B, follow through and finish all the requirements to acquire the license.
Right.
And if not, then we'll be taking it back.
I would just continue this hearing till that date, without going through to renotice, and just let them know that they have to be here.
Have to make a motion to continue the hearing, or?
Yep.
Okay. In that case, I'd like to make a motion to continue the liquor license hearing for Romito's, Romito &amp; Sons to April 28th.
So moved.
At 6:00 PM?
Right. So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none?
At 6:00 PM, you said?
Yes. Yeah, we'll start off, because...
I'm sorry, I...
No, it's okay, that's fine, yeah, we'll start off with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, we're a little earlier, 6:30 appointment isn't here yet. Why don't we, should we delve into the old business, Nick? The building department budget?
Mr. Chairman, I point out to the Board that the Building Commissioner submitted some information for the Board to review late today. So, request for salary increase, building department staff, this information came in, I was going to say sometime around four.
Okay, then we will take it under advisement, give us a chance to review it, and see what's being asked for, and go from there. And actually, now our 6:30, our 6:30 appointments here, would you mind if we take you a couple minutes early? Come on up? Tom Lawrence, our Tom clerk, treasurer, collector?
Yep. Yes, go ahead. All right. Thank you.
Are you tonight?
Good, how about you?
Good, thanks.
Spring's coming, isn't it?
It is. That's what they, that's what they're telling me. All right, you are here for a reserve fund transfer for, I'll let you explain what for, I think we all know, but...
Yeah. It's for our Treasurer's Budget 5785. It's the, under other charges, that's where we spend money on recording fees at the registry of deeds, our tax title expenses, and bank charges. And because of the tight constraints last year, we reduced that to adhere to the 0% guidelines. You know, with the understanding that we weren't going to use any tax title money on certain, on certain cases if we didn't have to. What had happened, and Selectman Gordon brought up a good point, 65 Avery Street. To take a look at it, it's been a tax title for a while, the back taxes are now over $60,000. It's a very unique case, out of 65, 600 parcels, it's, something like this is going to happen once in a great while, and it took some, you know, tracing down the prior owners, and it gets, it's something that you need tax title attorneys to do. So we did do that, we're getting very close of getting the possession back to us to look at, either an auction or just doing something with the property. And I know we took a look at it, and I actually have driven by it, I know, have you seen it, 65 Avery?
No, no.
Yeah. It's, I know there's a fire, there was a very unique situation where the people in there, one person passed away, the other person just left, and it's a way now to get all the paperwork, all the stuff, all the records, straight, get it back on the rolls. But again, we needed their services to do it quicker, and we spent about $3,200 bucks on them this year that wasn't expected, so that's the transfer.
And all this leads towards us, the town, getting back the, all the money that's owed in tax title upon sale of the property?
Exactly. It's almost $3,200 to get $60,000 back.
Okay. It's a good investment.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll take that one. But unfortunately, I had to go through the, that legwork to get it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the Board?
Yeah, did you ever find that owner?
The owner, one of them is deceased.
One of them?
Yeah. The other owner is, I think they're, they tracked him down, I don't know if it's California, it's someplace that is now local, you know, however, he doesn't want anything to do with the property, and once you get him to sign any final legal documents, if it's a redemption documents or whatever, then it's ours, and it's, you know, anything in town, I mean, if a builder comes, levels it, buys the land, builds another, I mean, it's well worth the investment to have an auction to get our money back.
And what are they owes for back taxes on the property?
It's a six, the last, it's like $61,429.
Now, because it's definitely a safety hazard, I've been out there three times, so we'll have to pay to knock that down, and maybe cap it.
Or maybe the buyer would pay to, you know, we could sell it as a lot, and buy, and, you know...
That's a possibility, too, if a builder looks at it, because I know there's some, there's decent spot of land in the back, so it could be attractive to a builder to level it, put up a bigger house. It's just a small ranch that's there now, and I don't think you can, you know, you can keep the foundation...
Was it partially burned, or is it...
Yeah, I'd say partially burnt, but it just didn't look like it was...
You could get the fire department to train on it, burn the rest of it.
Yeah. But you know, you do know that lot next door is sold.
That lot next door is sold, right.
Right, because that was part of that.
Right. Right.
All right. Any further questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer. Does it, did you say that, does this have a number, this reserve fund transfer, or is it just a...
I said $3,000.
Okay, $3,000 for the purposes of legal costs relating to reacquiring, if you will, Avery Street, the Avery Street property?
The town's possession.
The town's possession.
Yeah.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Aye.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks. One week from today, we have our elections, so...
Yes, yeah.
It'll be a little bit warmer and get people...
Thank you, Tom.
Is that going to be a long process, Tom?
I'd say...
Is that going to be a long process doing this?
It's more paperwork, it's something, again, it's different, we have to reassess, and it's almost like opening up new documents as far as the ones that were there years ago, it's just like updating them, and then moving forward with those. But I really think at an auction, I think this will grab the attention of some builders or some buyers.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I think what we'll do is take care of a few more matters, because our sergeant interviews don't start till 6:45, so I figure maybe about 6:40, we'll take a five-minute recess and get the chief up here, and then we'll figure out our question asking, and then go from there. So next item, Nick, is the annual town meeting, the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, you believe the Board and its packet have a copy of the draft warrant... Mr. Chairman, you believe the board and its packet have a copy of the draft warrant? I've been working with the town accountant now, so if the board would like, I could go through and talk a little bit about these articles. It's, looks different than when, last week when you saw it.
Okay, sure.
So, just going right through it here, Article one is the same, it's the reports. Article two is the budget, and you see that there is now a budget number in there that came from the town accountant, so I believe that that will be very close, it comes out to fifty-four million, two fifty-seven oh seventy-eight, and the report of the appropriations committee to follow. Article three is the capital article, and you see in there an amount of one, one point one seven two five one eight million, the report to follow. Article four, the stabilization fund, the proposed amount is one hundred thousand. Article five, OPEB, other post-employment benefits, that's fifty thousand.
Hold up for one minute, Nick.
Sure.
Wouldn't it be in this one?
No, it's in, it's in Eric, I think all gets nice.
Yeah, this is the one.
Oh, there's a copy for you.
Okay, it wasn't in the packet for some reason, but anyway, it's all good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Article six, prior year bills, an amount of thirty-five hundred. Article seven, the chapter ninety money, so that's moved up a bit. Articles eight and nine are still relative to the water enterprise fund and the sewer enterprise fund, and the accountant is still working on that language, I expect to have that tomorrow. Then it seems like Article ten would be a good place to move up, based on the conversation from last time, so if that is where the board is comfortable with that article being, I would leave it there. That's the article, the petitioned article relative to freezing the residential tax rate for citizens over seventy. Article eleven is the assessor's article to relist and recollect personal property data. Notice that the recommendation from the appropriations committee is from free cash. Let's see, Article twelve is relative to an LCAT fund of putting back money from the closed-out capital project for thirty-six eighty-eight eighty-two. Article thirteen is the closeout from the LCAT project from FY thirteen of fifty-one two twenty-one sixty-seven. Article fourteen, and here's where there's really a big change, and counsel's not yet seen this, but he knows it's coming, and I've spoken with the board about it, this is where the revolving fund articles would be consolidated, and so you see an aggregate number there of three hundred seventy thousand, and then you see right after it, a table listing the revolving funds. So it's LCAT, solid waste, COA, and public library. Notice, I would bring to the board's attention that the Center Hill, Center Hill revolving fund article, which had been proposed by appropriations to be removed entirely, that will not appear on this one. That was a, a fund that has dwindled down to approximately twelve hundred dollars, and has seen no activity in several years, so it is their recommendation that it be dissolved, and the funds go back into the general fund. Article fifteen, the Independence Day parade. Article sixteen, the community preservation fund, annual article making allocations, but if you notice, towards the end of the article, there are also some transfers to, to rebalance the funds properly, so that they accurately reflect what the percentages are. This is new from the accountant this year. Article seventeen is another rebalancing article, and it goes into detail here, and I think the accountant's point of view here is to detail all of these amounts, so that it'll be easier, well, so that in the warrant, usually you would see this type of detail in a motion only, but the accountant believes that because it is a rebalancing article, and will require certainly some explanation at town meeting, that to at least put it in the warrant this way is what she would recommend, and so you see several different lines there, proposing different transfers within the community preservation funds. Article eighteen, this is another one, this is the community preservation fund for digital, to digitize town records. Article nineteen, that was for twenty-five thousand, then Article nineteen is to conduct and to use CPC funds for an engineering study and plan to create playing fields at Heritage Park, also for twenty-five thousand. Then Article twenty, this is the proposed changes to elected healthcare for elected officials, and so now instead of twenty-five, it's here at twenty, Article twenty, and again, it's A, B, and C, and so what I would need from the board, and, and I don't know if this is something more for a discussion with council, or if the board's prepared to make the decision, I'll need to know which version of this article the board wants to have in the warrant.
Is that also what appropriations is looking for, in the, in the item B in our?
Well, their, counsel, as I understand it right now, is meeting with appropriations, who went next door to have conversations about the differences, about this and the ramifications of that.
Okay.
Through the chair, if you'd like to hear counsel's.
Yes, no, definitely, yeah.
So that would be, wanna speak with counsel later in this meeting? Article twenty-one is the local options meals excise tax, and again, I don't think that's the final language, but that's where, right now, it falls in the warrant. Article twenty-two, same thing, that's the senior work-off program, the language I may be finalized, but I have to speak with counsel about that. Article, Article twenty-three, this is a budget article, and this came to my attention through the chairman of appropriations late last week, and then the accountant brought this to my attention a little bit more today, and gave me questions to ask the board. There, there is a question, the board is aware that there is a question for a charter commission, and people are on the ballot for election. The accountant has notified me that upon approval of this question, there is a twenty-day requirement in, to then fund this charter commission by statute with at least five thousand dollars to conduct its business. And had a, I would say to the board, had I known that this would be the case, I just wasn't aware of the statute, but I put in there that it's a placeholder article, and really, a couple of ways to go with this. If the article passes, if the question passes, first of all, the two options start, well, I'll just go through them. Option one would be to approve a reserve fund transfer for the five thousand prior to the annual town meeting. Then through the warrant article, establish a department fund in the warrant, so it would be listed as a department. If the department, if, if the board wanted it to be a department, then the appropriations committee and the Board of Selectmen could increase the amount of money during the year if it were needed over five thousand. So let's say a consultant would cost ten thousand, and everyone agrees that that would be a worthy endeavor. The only way, if it's a department, that it could be increased, would be through a reserve fund transfer during the year, or an end-of-the-year transfer between departments if there are funds left over. And if the other way is, you would start again prior to the annual town meeting, once the question were approved, you would do a reserve fund transfer, then if you wanted to consider it a project, then, first of all, the project would not need to be approved by the annual town meeting every year. So if it's a department, it's established, it wouldn't have to be renewed by annual town meeting, and you could work a reserve fund transfer here. If, if, if it's a project, it would go on the warrant, but then you wouldn't have to renew it on the warrant annually.
It would run till the termination of the project.
It would run until the termination of the project, exactly. However, if more funding was needed during the year, so if that consultant were to be ten thousand instead of the five, the only way that you could increase the amount for the project would be through town meeting approval, so you would have to have a special if it's in the middle of the year to do that. Now, the thing to keep in mind is that either method allows or requires that the unspent funds revert to the general, general fund, once the charter commission is dissolved. So, again, this is something that, that the board, that the appropriations committee recognizes somewhat late in the game, but recognizes that this needs to be addressed, and the question for the board is which way do you want to go?
It sounds like, I, I mean, my thought process is, if we make it a department, we only have to effectively renew the department once a year, as opposed to making it a project, and if you make it a project, we don't have to renew it, but we're hamstrung as far as when we can get funds, we can only get funds at town meeting or a special town meeting, whereas if we, if it was a department, true, you have to renew the department every year, but if you had to get funds during the year, you don't have to have a town meeting to do it, so it might be, it might not delay things until, you know, until we could get, until we could get a town meeting schedule, that's just my opinion.
Through the chair, I, I believe that the charter commission, once established, only has it, has a definite amount of time, it's not going on and on, so I don't know if it would go for more than a year. So do we really need to have it be a department?
True.
If it's not gonna go for more than one year.
True.
Was this article put in, in time, Nick? For the closing date?
This, this article was not submitted as part of the closing date. This article, unless the board decides otherwise, is being presented as a financial article by the appropriations committee. Which the financial articles have, have been changed and added as the budget process has gone on. Again, this is the Board of Selectmen's document. If the board makes a decision that it should have been submitted by a particular deadline, then that's the board's prerogative. I have to tell you, I've not reviewed the, the statute that requires the amount of money to be set aside and established for the committee, so if it's not, if there's no provision in here, I don't know if that means then it would have to be addressed at a subsequent special town meeting, or not, I, I don't know.
Okay, but if we don't, regardless of the fact that there's a definite timeframe for the, for the charter commission, if we don't make it a department, then we can't, we can only get any future funds through a town meeting.
That is.
So that, that, you know, hopefully they would have something within a year, we wouldn't have to renew the charter commission, so. I mean, is there any further discussion, or, or questions? Because I'm thinking, and I'm just throwing this out there, you guys don't have to do anything with it, but I'm thinking, I make, to propose a motion to create a department for the charter commission with a reserve fund transfer, well, we'll discuss the reserve fund transfer prior to the annual town meeting, to have that department renewed annually if needed.
I'll second it for a discussion, please.
What's gonna be moved first?
I'll move it for a discussion.
Second?
No.
No? Okay. Then, we'll have to, then I'll make a motion to, let's see, what can we do here? Because we have to do one or the other, I would assume, for the charter commission. I could second on necessity, couldn't I, for discussion? Okay, I'll second on necessity. Any discussion?
Okay, I, I'm very concerned about making it a department, because how do we know how much money would be spent on that, other than the five thousand? So I think that I, I could support having it not be a department, because we do have to give them five thousand dollars to work with. However, if it does go over that, I think the townspeople have a right to be able to, to say, and I think it kind of keeps them within their restraint.
Okay, that's fine. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just so, I have, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just, right now, the motion then is to make it a department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're gonna, we're gonna, it sounds like not vote on that right now. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to set the charter commission up as, not as a department, I guess it would just be a commission with no annual renewal necessary, but with the stipulation that if any additional funds are needed, other than the reserve fund transfer, it would have to go to town meeting approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. Now, thank you. I, I work five minutes later, I'd like to request a, like a two-minute recess, so we can get organized for the sergeant's questions.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hopefully not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Who's Susa first?
I don't know.
Yeah, Susa's first.
Okay. All right, could you get our first candidate? Thank you, sir.
Oh, do you wanna, do you wanna say anything about him recording?
I'll do that one. Are we on yet? Just as a note, Chris Goodrow from the reminder?
Yep.
Could you, are you recording, or have you recorded any part of this meeting? All right, thank you. You're a lawyer.
Housekeeping.
How you doing?
Yeah, and I'll see you later.
I have a, another, another resume, and I'll just, I have to retype it, it says updated info, but it's pretty much the same.
How are you today?
I'm good, sir, how are you?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
As, similar to last time, we have ten questions, and we're going to ask them in order here, we're gonna start with the chief, work our way this way, and then obviously, once we get through both the applicants, we'll review our, our information and make a decision. So obviously, be as relaxed as you can, and we're, we're all friends here, so, I'll let the, well, maybe not the guy in the end, I don't know.
He's the boss.
That's right.
Michael, if you had a son or daughter in trouble with the police, how would you handle the situation?
Well, if they were in trouble with the police department here, I have to stay out of it as much as possible, obviously, there's a huge conflict of interest there. Depending on what he or she did, it's kind of up to the, the police, maybe if it's something serious, and they kind of make their own bed, you gotta try to take care of them the best you can, and obviously, as a parent, you want to, and I think that's why it's kind of important for me to maybe recuse myself as much as possible from a situation like that. In other towns, I, you know, work the best I can with, to, to help my kid out, you know, if they do something wrong, then that's, it's their responsibility to take care of it, you know, they're gonna be adults, you can't take care of them your whole life, they need to learn, be held accountable for what they do. Thank you.
What makes you better, what makes you a better candidate for sergeant than the other candidate?
as, as either a sergeant and then a staff sergeant, whereas, you know, in charge of people, in charge of evaluating them, in charge of training them, in charge of, you know, every aspect of making sure that they're capable of doing their job effectively and proficiently, and setting them up to, you know, one day, hopefully, become supervisors themselves.
Thank you.
Michael, how would you improve your shift to perform better and safer?
Well, I think last time I was, I brought up the roll call, formalizing that, making it a little bit more directed, so everyone's on the same page. As far as bringing in maybe even another guy, I, I think there's a, there's a kind of an issue with, it could be with officer safety, with other things, whereas right now, when we have, our minimum is two guys on the road, it really only allows us to handle one, one significant call at a time. If there's an accident with, with injuries, a car accident, if there's a domestic or something like that, that kind of takes up the entire shift, leaving the rest of the town to kind of fend for itself until the call is resolved. I think, maybe if you could add another guy to each shift, really, it allows our capabilities to, you know, handle a little bit more, and still keep people safe, and keep the officers that are responding to these calls safe.
Thanks. Am I right too slow?
All right.
Yeah.
Mike, as a sergeant in decision-making, when going on a call, what criteria would you use to make your decision?
Well, depends on the type of call. Obviously, different calls require different things. Is there a specific example you'd like to give? I know we had a similar question last time. Is there anything in particular, maybe I could direct it and you get a better feel for my decision-making process, I guess?
Okay.
Do you have an example?
Well, you just make up one.
Okay.
You give me an example, yeah.
Okay. Let's see. So, we'll do something pretty common, you just, you can do a traffic stop for a suspended license and revoked registration, it happens, you know, virtually every day. So obviously, well, not obviously, but it is an arrestable thing, you can arrest people for that. Generally, I would shy away from that, I mean, people get licenses suspended for, you know, not paying a ticket, something silly, whereas you kind of just want to help them out, help them take care of it. In other cases, when it's for something more serious, where it's related to habitual traffic offenses, or narcotics violations, or things like that, you have to use your discretion appropriately, and sometimes an arrest is the way to go, but I think it's important to, to use your discretion while making decisions, because we are given a lot of latitude as police officers in order to make the most effective decision, to help, either help the person or get them, get them off the street if they happen to be a, you know, more dangerous individual.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Michael, where do you see yourself in five years?
Chief. Probably not chief.
Actually, one more, Bill.
No, I don't see myself going anywhere. I've been to a department for, you know, a few years now. Hopefully, I'll be a sergeant. If not, I'll probably, I'll still be here. I have family in town, and I grew up here, I know the town very well, I don't foresee myself going anywhere else. If other opportunities open up, I'm sure I'll, I'll try to take advantage of them. I like to get involved as many things as I can. Thank you.
Okay. What is the most knowledge that you, excuse me, what is the most knowledge that you bring to the table?
Like I referenced earlier, the, my leadership knowledge, I think, is pretty extensive. So I have a lot of experience being in charge of other people, learning how to deal with personality conflicts when you are, you know, supervising, directly supervising a group of other people, learning how to mediate between conflicts with, you know, between people that you're supervising. I've taken several courses, you know, through the military, but several courses on leadership, leadership styles, and different ways to, to handle mentor and evaluate subordinates.
Mike, working in a small town, there's a good chance that you will interact with someone you know or may have grown up with. How will you handle this situation?
Well, it happens on kind of a regular basis. Like I said, I did, I grew up here, so it does happen to me quite a bit. I try not to let it affect me, let it affect my, how I do my job, and I'm sure it probably does to an extent, but as far as it affecting how I do my job, I don't think it does, and I try not to put myself in awkward situations where it creates a, like an ethical dilemma, if at all possible, and I do know somebody, and they're involved in something, and I feel like it might create an issue, then there's other officers there that can, that can take the lead in an investigation, if that's what the case is. So I'll try to keep myself out of it, all it will do is create problems down the road, so. But to this point, it hasn't had any negative effect on my ability to police the town.
Thanks.
Mike, as you know, this is a leadership position. How would you welcome, monitor, and mentor an unpopular recruit who is new to our Isla Meadow Police Department?
Well, as far as mentoring a new recruit, or any officer really, is, it's important to, to assess where they're at, and see what you can do to make them as effective as possible. Bias towards people that maybe you don't really know, it might just be personality conflicts, and an important factor is there is to keep what happened, what is going on at work, at work. If you have a personality issue, it can't be coming into the station, because all it will do is degrade the ability of the, of the shift, or the department to function properly. As far as mentoring goes, all you can really, all, all you can do is set that new officer up as best you can, and make sure he's trained properly, make sure he knows how to react in situations as best you can, and then, you know, make sure other officers aren't around, you know, behind your back, instigating something that maybe they shouldn't be, because, like I said, all it will do is lead to lack of trust, and, and lack of cohesion in a shift.
Thanks, Mike.
Michael, what is the one way that you would foster positive morale with officers in the department? And how do you create an inclusive environment?
There's a couple ways you could probably raise morale. There's a lot of younger guys, like, that would be interested in new training opportunities, if it's possible. They're motivated, they're, they're looking to get into some specialties if they can, they're looking to do other things other than just patrol in addition, which is good, because then, you know, you don't have people that are just looking to just show up at shift and then go home, they're looking to expand their horizons a little bit. To be, be inclusive, our, our department is, you know, not that big, so everyone's pretty close as it is. You just got to make sure that the shift is acting professional, and outside of that, it will, it will kind of foster a little bit of level of respect, where they're not, they're looking forward to going to work, as opposed to, you know, maybe being a little bit apprehensive if they're not getting along with somebody, and they don't want to go to their shift, because there's a personality conflict on the shift. It's just something you really need to avoid while you're at work.
Thank you.
Okay. Last question. Do you have anything else that you wish to add?
No, I just hope that you give me a good consideration. Like I said, I have several years of experience being in a supervisory position, doing evaluations, training, training subordinates, making sure that they're equipped and prepared to do their job as effectively as possible.
One question through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
Your assignments when you were overseas and your tours, I believe you had said to me at one time, you were interacting with the communities that you were patrolling in.
Yes, my job in the Army was civil affairs, so my primary function, it's a counterinsurgency job, so my primary function is to kind of act as a liaison, I guess, between the military commander, area of operations, and the local population. So my job, pretty much every day, was to go on patrol with an infantry platoon and meet local leaders, see what, and assess what their needs, what the needs of their villages, things like that are, to make them as favorable to the US or coalition forces as possible, so that it makes it harder for insurgents to hide in those types of areas. So I did a fairly significant amount of interacting with very high-level government officials all overseas.
Great. Thank you.
How many years you got on the force?
About three, three and a half years. I was eligible to take the sergeant's test after first year, and I happened to pass it the first time, so.
Great, thank you, Michael. All right, everyone all set? Got all your notes, man? All right, could you bring in the other candidate?
I try.
No.
Thanks.
It's the original.
Time frame is?
Yeah. I don't know what kind of gray my hair is. Equal seven. Seven days from now, you'll be on the beach.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Much larger table this time.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's fucking to navigate. How are you today?
Doing well.
That's good. As you know from the last time, we're, we're going to do it very similarly. We've got ten questions we're going to ask, we're going to start with the chief, work our way around two and, two and a half times, and we obviously be relaxed, you know, give us your best answers, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
All right. Chief?
Yes, sir. Dan, if you had a son or daughter in trouble with the police, how would you handle the situation?
Well, I'd handle the situation first by speaking to my child about the incident, and then I would certainly take him straight to wherever department that incident occurred, and have him speak with the investigating officer. I would make sure that my son or daughter is 100% honest and truthful, and just see how it can get resolved appropriately, so the situation is over with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, right, fast enough. What makes you a better candidate for the sergeant than the other candidate?
Well, one of the reasons why I may be the most qualified candidate is the number of years that I've actually been working on patrol, which is a little over eight years now. I've also started school, and it was strictly for political science and criminal justice, and I got a bachelor's degree in both of those areas. Also, I've been coaching and mentoring children at the high school level for cross-country and track, and to help continue the ability to actually, you know, teach people. That's what it comes down to. One of the reasons why you could be a good supervisor is to teach, and actually just make sure that they're doing what they need to be doing correctly.
Thank you.
Dan, how would you improve your shift to perform better and safer?
My shift is the second shift, and it's probably one of the busiest shifts, as some of you well know. There's a lot of areas where it could improve. For instance, more manpower. Another one would be adding a detective position at that shift to assist with any major crimes that occur. But unfortunately, all these things involve money, and the town doesn't always have all the money. But I certainly do believe that the town itself does very well with the amount of money that it does use. The chief spreads out the budget as best he can, between training and the shifts, and getting things done.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dan, as a sergeant in decision-making, when going on a call, what criteria would you use in making your decision?
There's quite a few things in the criteria, how to make a decision. First and foremost, I would rely on what the responding officers, the first officer's opinion, and what they saw occur, but certainly get as much input as you can during the call, and prior, before the call, during the call, and after the call. The more information you get, the better you can make a judgment, and I'd weigh the patrolman, or whoever was there first, I would weigh their opinion at the highest level.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, where do you see yourself in five years?
Five years, I certainly hope to see myself as a supervisor here in Isla Meadow. I've always lived in the town, I can't see going anywhere else, and this is where I want to be.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. What is the most knowledge that you bring to the table?
The most knowledge that I actually bring to the table, I would say, is my ability to talk to people. I, I'm usually pretty good in a volatile situation to try to calm things down. It doesn't always work, but the first thing you want to try to use is your silver tongue, just to make things better. And I think that's probably one of my best qualities.
Thank you.
All right. Dan, working in a small town, there's a good chance that you'll interact with someone you know or may have grown up with. How will you handle this situation?
Unfortunately, I have had to handle this situation in the past. What I've done in that type of situation is that I take a backseat or an assisting officer role. It's always best to have somebody who doesn't have a possible agenda, and no one can say that there was any sort of bias. I would do anything I can to help the other officers with what they feel should happen, and that's exactly what I would do. I would become an assisting officer, and I would not take the primary position during that incident.
Thank you.
Dan, as you know, this is a leadership position. How would you welcome, monitor, and mentor an unpopular recruit who is new to Isla Meadow Police Department?
Well, first and foremost, I myself, when I got hired, may have been an unpopular choice because of my father, but I did make it, and one of the things that was really important to me was earning the respect of all the other patrolmen. That's one of the things that I would try to encourage in the new recruit, is to earn the respect, let them know that sometimes it takes a little bit of time, and certainly help them anywhere where he has any snags, make sure that he does everything properly, and just try to keep an eye on him to make sure that, you know, the selectmen's choice is probably the best choice, so that's what we want to keep here in Isla Meadow.
Thank you.
One second, Dan.
Absolutely.
What is one way you would foster positive morale with other officers in the department, and how do you create an inclusive environment?
Well, it's slightly difficult to have a completely inclusive environment, because everybody works different shifts, but you could certainly have a very inclusive environment within your own shift. For instance, if you get off at, all at the same time, maybe you can join a bowling league, or you can go out and do something that you all enjoy together. One of the best ways to do that, I think, is outside of work itself, because work can be very stressful, and if you can do something that you enjoy with people that you work with, I think you'd see a different person. So I, one of the ways to raise morale is to actually, you know, see each other outside of work and see how you are.
Okay. Last question. Do you have anything else that you would like to add?
I'd just like to let everyone know that I've been here for eight years as a police officer. I've been employed by the town since age eighteen, through coaching, on the school committee, in leadership roles, and I've always lived here in town, and this is, this is where I want to stay. For instance, if you get off at, all at the same time, maybe you can join a bowling league or you can go out and do something that you all enjoy together. One of the best ways to do that, I think, is outside of work itself because work can be very stressful. And if you can do something that you enjoy with people that you work with, I think you'd see a different person. So I, one of the ways to raise morale is to actually, you know, see each other outside of work and see how you are.
Thank you.
Last question. Do you have anything else that you would like to add?
I'd just like to let everyone know that I've been here for eight years as a police officer. I've been employed by the town since age eighteen through coaching, on the school committee, in leadership roles. And I've always lived here in town and this is, this is where I want to stay. This position would really mean a lot to me and no matter what the decision is, I'll be happy to work here.
Question to the chair.
Dan, you've also, you say eight years as a police officer, sworn police officer.
Yes, sir.
But you were a permanent intermittent prior to that for a number of years.
Yes, sir.
All right. Everyone all set? Thanks, sir.
I'll start it down so I can go down.
Thanks for your services.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, would everyone like a few minutes to tabulate? Take maybe a two-minute, five-minute recess, something like that? I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. All right, we're back in, we're back in session. As usual, and this is always nice to say, but we have two good candidates going through their answers and their resumes. They both have, they both bring qualities to the table that would, that would, in my opinion, you know, lend either of them becoming sergeant material. I'd like to hear from the board to see what, what you folks have to say. Feel free, anyone, to jump in.
I myself think both, both are good candidates for sergeant. One has a little more experience than the other. One has some leadership qualities, probably a little more than the other. It's kind of like American Idol. You're gonna try to pick who the best candidate is here and it's probably the worst part of our job.
It is.
But looking at both things, my, my own opinion, I think a person has to have at least five years on a job before they should even apply for a sergeant because I think you're gonna be out in the field and be in situations to know what to do. So my pick tonight would be for Manley, Daniel Manley.
Do you have any, would you like to?
Well, you know, it's, it's wonderful that, again, that we have the two candidates. It's too bad that you don't have two positions. Unfortunately, there's only one. And I would concur with the things that Selectman Gorman has said, the experience. And I like the two bachelor's degrees that he has and then also he has the experience in the street. So my pick would be Dan Manley also.
Okay, would, since, would one of you want to make a motion in that regard?
I would. I move that we select Daniel Man, Daniel J. Manley as our candidate for sergeant.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here, you're not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And once again, chief.
I believe if the board's picking a sergeant, Officer Manley can become sergeant. The board does need to take a moment to express reasons for bypass rather than through Mr. Suzo.
Okay. And we've given yours. I, I do tend to agree with that, although I think, I think Michael had some great leadership qualities. I, you know, I don't, I don't envy him going through Iraq and whatnot, being an effective goodwill ambassador, but I do think you need a few more years also for, to be a sergeant, so.
I said the same thing. And I do like the idea that, the education piece of it with the experience. That Daniel, he has two bachelor's degrees when you're comparing the two of them together.
All right. So suffice?
If one's more comfortable, if they believe that they're eligible.
Okay, all right, thanks. Now, who do, I know we, we talk about this all the time, who will notify?
Did they both leave? Do you know? If you want, I'll call both.
Sure.
Yeah, I believe one will have, Dan will have to be down tomorrow to sign paperwork in your office. The acceptance.
Yes.
I'll get that document down.
All right. Wonderful, thank you. Thanks, sir, for your help. Just saying, I know you look real comfortable up here, but I think you can leave now.
She got my coat.
Okay, you can't leave now. Get better.
I'm trying.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Yeah, we gotta give these to Nick again. Pass, I'll pass these over to Nick. Yeah, we're giving them to Nick. Thanks, chief.
Hi, chief. Can you talk sometime about those uniforms?
Give me a shot. All right. Thank you. All right. We are.
You keeping the lenses?
No, I'll give them to, I didn't. We are back. Now, Nick had said, one of the items that we had sort of left on was the Questions and Appropriations Committee to Town Council regarding the elected officials' articles. And Nick, you said you were, did you get a chance to go next to our?
I, you know, I didn't really have an opportunity to.
Okay.
Just get into the conversation.
Okay, that's fine. Because I guess they were, they were discussing the same thing. So we, we made our decision, so, I believe. And voted on it, so we can, they can go from there if you have any issue with that, so.
Can we rewind just for a minute?
Can we what?
Just rewind for just a minute?
Sure.
Just, I think I should disclose that I did work with Dan Manley on the school committee, but that didn't affect my decision. I think he wasn't in my business and he didn't, I didn't pay him anything.
Okay.
And he didn't pay me anything.
All right.
One of the beauties of a small town.
All right. So next item.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused. If I could, are you still talking about the warrant to finish it out? There were a couple of on there or are you moving on to other business?
Well, I thought we had, I thought the only item we had, we voted on, which was that we hadn't taken, was the, like, the.
The three versions.
Elected official, uh, which version was gonna, I'm sorry, we're talking about two different things. One of them was the, the item about the, the money for the charter commission.
And the board has voted on that?
Right.
Yeah, we voted on that.
Right. And as far as the elected officials' article, we hadn't, I don't believe we've.
We didn't choose because we wanted to talk to council about it.
Right. And I, this is probably another one, so I guess, I don't know if we should do that now or soon?
That was, that was my question.
All right, Jim.
The board wanted to do that, Mr. Chairman, while council's coming up, if I could explain to the board.
Well, I may have to, first of all, I may have to leave for this, so. Jim? We're, do you mind coming up?
Yes.
What the question is, is which format the town elected official coverage, which I, which format is gonna be in on the warrant? You know, because there's three, there's A, B, and C.
And it's.
And do I have to leave? I'm just sitting here covering my ears?
Well, that's an interesting question. I mean, you've removed yourself from other issues because you're covered by the insurance. I would say probably for consistency, it would make some sense.
Right.
But it is a matter that you're not gonna be making a decision.
Right.
Just as to what's gonna go, the question's gonna go to town.
Yeah, there, there, it's going one way or the other, so.
Right, so the disclosure is there and I think that you could consider it if you want or it's up to you.
No, that's fine. Like I said, it's, I'm sure everyone would, would agree, the choices are already there, it's just a matter of which one you're gonna do, so. And I don't think I'll influence that. All right, so who, well, women don't, because to that end, I think, you want a choice made tonight, right, as to which?
I was hoping to get direction, yes, from the board as to which, which version the board wanted on there.
The one, the one I submitted with, the very last one.
The, the very last one, yes, that's the petition version, yes. This is.
He's looking at Article 20 right now. Yeah, I'm gonna dig it down. It's right, this one, this one down. Because I'm not gonna. So I guess the question is, of those three, of the three different versions, which one is the one on number 20 that, that you want to bring forward to the town?
I don't think any of those, but the one, the one I submitted was Article 24.
Right, but this, but these are the ones that were submitted by the board, I believe, right? Yeah, so we have to choose one of those three to, for Article 20.
Sir.
Jim.
Jim, do you have any preference?
I have no, no preference. The, the reason that the three were drafted is that it gives the board the broadest discretion in determining how you wish to handle the health insurance if you are looking to have elected officials pay one hundred percent on the health insurance plus administrative costs. Version A asks the legislature to pass a special act authorizing the town of Islam Meadow to allow elected officials who work normally, are required to work normally less than twenty hours a week, to participate in the health insurance plan if they pay one hundred percent of the cost plus the administrative costs that are determined by the board that's selected. Version B allows the same thing, except it allow, it further allows an existing elected official, current elected official, to remain on the town's health insurance at his current, his or her current cost through the fiscal year that the special act isn't enacted. And if it was enacted, it would be enacted in the next fiscal year, sometime, probably in October, November of next year. And that would allow the official to remain on through June 30th of 2016. And the third version allows any official elected before May 15th, 2015, May 1st, 2015, to remain on the town's health insurance plan at the current percentages until his or her current term expires. So by way of example, if a person were elected a year ago in April and this legislation were passed in November of this year, that person would be allowed to stay on until the end of their term and assuming it was a three-year term, they'd be on, be allowed to stay on through the end of fiscal, on June 30th, 2016. And the end of their term would be June 30th, 2000, or May 2017, whatever the end is determined, I'm sorry. But those are the three options that are there.
I guess if I had to choose, I would say A. I think that was what appropriations was looking for, to get the, like, to, to decrease the liability of the town with regards to the health insurance.
Yeah, well, they were, I, when I left here this evening, I left here to go over and to answer questions that they had with respect to these three specific options. And I don't know whether they've taken a position yet or not, but they were going to do, they were intending to take it tonight, I think, but I don't know. They hadn't done it at the time I left to come back from here.
I would think that, and just thinking out loud, that they'd probably go with A too because they're trying to do, they're trying to reduce the cost, you know, the budget items as much and as rapidly as possible. So that's the one that's gonna have the most bang for the buck. That's just my guess. I think Nick may be going to find out what they voted on, so.
Yeah, I, I don't like to speak for any board, um, because I find it usually wrong. So I'll leave it for them to tell you what their opinion is.
Is, if that's, I'm gonna get, I know, like I said, I haven't been involved in any of these discussions, so if you would, if you're interested in making a motion in that regard, you can choose one of these.
Well, okay, of the three, I would make a motion that we accept Article 20A.
Um, is that, you wanna, you wanna move that?
Yeah, move it.
Okay, um, oh, you, I'll second it. Can I second it, even though I haven't been, like I said, I'm not, this doesn't.
I think at this point, it would probably be better.
Okay.
Select the floor for the second.
I'll second on a necessity. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's just for that.
Okay. So that was the item that, okay. Of course, naturally, the next item is a town, you can go sit down now. If you want to go back.
Do you have any other answer?
Well, not until later. I want to skip number eight for a minute. Are you involved in LCAP policy?
Yeah, there should be, we're supposed to have made those changes and I don't, to those last sentences that we talked about. I didn't see it, so. I didn't see it in here. So I just have to wait.
I think what we'll do, because a few of these involve Nick, is I'm gonna jump down to the new business. Item 11 is just the Charter of Communications, noting that there's a couple new channels on there, I think they're basic cable. And there's a letter from the Cultural Council as a request for the use of the Little Red Schoolhouse. There is a group that was established by Cory Garwaki's, I believe, mother, the Cory Garwaki Foundation. And as you may or may not know, Cory lived in town. He had a life full of unfortunate medical ailments and he ended up passing away at a young age. And, but when he was alive, he did amazing things, helping other kids and through school and through other endeavors. And I guess his mother and some other people are keeping his spirit alive by forming a foundation and they're gonna help other people, you know, in his name. So what they would like to do is have meetings at the Little Red Schoolhouse, I believe, once a month. So they're looking for our permission to allow them to use the Little Red Schoolhouse once a month for these meetings. So for purposes of discussion, I'd like to make a motion to allow the, allow the Cory Garwaki Foundation to use the Little Red Schoolhouse for, for, for monthly meetings.
So.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I think that's wonderful that they're gonna be using that space.
Okay. Any further?
Aye.
Oh, we haven't voted yet. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Nick, we jumped ahead a little bit because I knew there were a couple items that, like, I didn't want to, did you get any response from them?
I did. The committee favors A, but they would be comfortable with any of.
A, A was voted on, by.
So then it works out. And the chairman said they're about to wrap up, that he'll stop in just in case you have any questions, but.
Okay, all right. The next item, this is one we don't want to do without you, is the town administrator's position.
Mr. Chairman, would, just to, I think you've probably wrapped up on the warrant for the evening.
Yes.
But could I just point out one thing?
Mm-hmm.
Because I didn't make a specific note on it, but the, and I think you have an email in your packet from the.
Chairman?
DPW.
Oh, oh, yes.
Regarding the renovations of Town Hall, that warrant article, the DPW has decided to pull that because Capitol wanted it in the actual Capitol plan. So you will see that listed in the Capitol plan.
Okay, so that's actually a portion of that budget item or that warrant item for Capitol, that's not a separate?
That's right. That, that's right.
Thank you. Okay, so now, I noticed the same correspondence was there from last time, so you're still in the, in limbo?
Yes, I am still in negotiations with the town of Wilbraham. I don't have anything solid to report to the board, other than we are still, I believe, looking at June 1st, but I am still in negotiations. I have provided the board just with a very cursory draft of the position. You know, I know it's difficult for the board here and I do apologize for putting the board in this position in the town. It's really something I can't help at this point. But my question, I think, to the board would be, if between now and the 21 days for your next meeting, things are settled and I am in a position then to submit a resignation to the town, does the board want to consider taking any kind of interim action or actions, meaning coming up with a better, or maybe improved versions of the job description of the ad? And then also, does the board want to maybe?
So then it works out, and the chairman said they're about to wrap up. He'll stop in just in case you have any questions.
Okay, all right. The next item, this is one we don't want to do without you, is the Town Administrator's Position.
Mr. Chairman, just to, I think you've probably wrapped up on the warrant for the evening.
Yes.
But could I just point out one thing?
Mm-hmm.
Because I didn't make a specific note on it, but the, and I think you have an email in your packet from the DPW...
Chairman? Oh, yes.
Regarding the renovations of Town Hall, that warrant article. The DPW has decided to pull that because Capitol wanted it in the actual Capitol plan. So you will see that listed in the Capitol plan.
Okay, so that's actually a portion of that budget item, or that warrant item for Capitol. It's not a separate?
That's right. That's right.
Thank you. Okay, so now, I notice the same correspondence was there from last time, so you're still in limbo?
Yes, I am still in negotiations with the Town of Wilbraham. I don't have anything solid to report to the board, other than we are still, I believe, looking at June 1st, but I am still in negotiations. I have provided the board just with a very cursory draft of the position. You know, I know it's difficult for the board here, and I do apologize for putting the board in this position in the town. It's really something I can't help at this point. But my question, I think, to the board would be, if between now and the 21 days for your next meeting, things are settled, and I am in a position then to submit a resignation to the town, does the board want to consider taking any kind of interim action or actions, meaning coming up with a better, maybe improved versions of the job description of the ad? And then also, does the board want to maybe look for any interim people? As I mentioned at the last meeting, there was at least one person who contacted the office unsolicited that could perhaps offer, and I wonder if maybe taking a more proactive approach in the meantime might be something that the board's looking at. So I know it's difficult, it's sort of hypothetical until everything is finalized, but there, you know, I was wondering if there's a way to, that I could assist the board in making good use of the time once things are finalized, if it happens between now and the 21st.
Through the chair, I just know that there's some things that I would like to see added to the position, so. I know he gave us that, and this is our first read, so.
And they got to talk a little.
I'm sorry. I know that this is our first read with this, and I know that there are some things that I would like to see added to the job description and manipulated a little bit, and this is our first read, he just gave it to us.
Well, okay, you're done?
I'm done.
Not through the boards?
All right.
Yes.
Well, I asked Nick, you know, why he applied for this job in the first place, and after being on the job, because he looked, he looked at what was put in the paper, and after working this job for as long as he has, if he thought we should put anything in the newspaper, other, you know, that he saw on the job that we may need more than what we advertised the first time. And I think also, we probably should get off our butts as a select board and not wait till the last minute for this. I think we should start advertising and come up with some type of a resume or, you know, job classification of what we want to see out of somebody, but I think we should be jumping, because we only have, we know Nick is probably going to take the job, for sure, and so we only got probably six weeks or so. And I think we should, you know, come up with some type of a job description that we, that between the three of us, that we can put in paper. I wouldn't say the three of us, I'd say between the three of us, Nick and Lorraine, because Lorraine worked with him quite closely, and I think they would know, you know, more what we would need for a person in this position.
Well, I think the most important person, obviously, is Nick, because he's, he knows the job, he knows the job description. Obviously, if we put more things in the job description than what he actually does or is qualified to do, then that changes the job. And I know we've had, I've had people comment to me in town. I know one of the things Nick mentioned was the fact that he's going from a weak town manager to a strong town manager, and I've been told a million times by people that we're too hands-on, and there's a lot of things that our town manager can do that we shouldn't have to, you know, do on a, on every meeting basis, so.
I'm for that.
So, you know, that might be something to look into, too, as we, as we go forward. And I think if we can get by, to the next meeting with, with an idea of what the, what it will look like, you know, what your, what the job description will look like, then we can move forward. And based on talks with Nick, you know, it's like 99% sure that we're going to have to hire someone as an interim manner, because just because of what you said, the timeframe, we're not going to have time to go out and do a search, you know, and get, depending on how we do the search, and get qualified candidates and interview them in such a short period of time, so.
That's exactly what I was about to say. We don't want to rush into this, because we want to make sure we get a qualified candidate and not rush and just get anybody.
Right.
So I do think you may have to go to an intern. But also, this is also an opportunity for us to, to possibly add some things in there, something maybe of an HR, just not the whole thing, they can't do the whole thing, but maybe there are some HR functions that could be added. This is a unique time to do that, you know, if it gets past that town meeting and we get the full department, then that's a conversation that's mute. But I don't think we're going to have somebody by the town meeting, so.
And also, we have to consider that we are in a certain salary restraint, so depending on what we add to it, we may have to do something in that regard, but that's... But I know, I think, unless I'm wrong, Nick, Wilbraham had 47 applicants, something to that effect? Yeah, so, okay. So we'll, yeah, well, if we can do something by the, and I'll be happy to, to work with you, Nick, and obviously, any of the other board members also, to get the job description ready for, so hopefully, we can finalize it on the 28th, and then get it, get it posted in various places, the MMA and so on, and see what, and also, I know we've been, there's been this person as far as an interim, and I've heard, I heard another name bandied about that I won't say yet until I talk to a person, but if we can get a couple interim candidates in there, then... I almost jokingly said, there's one, but anyways.
I mean, I wasn't here before, but how do we go about picking Nick as the selection?
I wasn't here either.
Oh, you weren't here either?
He's been here 10 years, yeah.
Through the chairman, the last search was conducted when Mr. Goman left at the end of October. The Board of Selectmen advertised sometime, I want to say in October, and conducted interviews in December. And they, to my knowledge, did the entire process. They used the job description and did all of the interviews. There was no preliminary round of interviews. It was the Board of Selectmen who decided on the finalists, and then conducted the interviews, and made the offer. And I don't know if it had, if the sort of abbreviated process as compared with a process that included, that includes a Town Administrator Search Committee. I don't know if that was used, because at that time, the Charter Commission was fairly well along in its work, and in fact, made its presentation, you know, the first April that I was here, first few months I was on the job, and there was a vote on the Charter Commission that spring. So I don't know if using an abbreviated, that was a result of that, because it was up in the air.
Okay. BS, that's it? Yes. All right, so that's what we'll do, is we'll all work together. Any thoughts? We'll get them to Nick, and we'll get the, so we can get a job description in place by the meeting of the 28th. You may not have that much input, because you'll be on the beach, but that's another story. So.
We should still have input, though.
True. The Skyping went so well last year.
Yeah, I know.
But anyway, we have a number of the members of the Appropriations Committee who stopped by, because there must be nothing on TV tonight, but I just want to let you, let you folks know that my board voted on, on option A for Article 20, for the, you know, which is, I think, what you were hoping for, so.
So we agreed?
Yeah.
Before you even came in and told us? Scary, isn't it?
So I don't know if there's anything, since you're all here, you know, is there anything else that, that you want to go over, and, you know?
There's not, actually. The whole reason for my stopping in was to see if there was anything that you wanted to go over.
Okay.
We've kind of wrapped up our budget recommendations. Everything's getting set to go to, off the print.
Okay.
It's getting a little bit late to make any changes, but if there were any discussions, it had to occur. Since we were right next door, I thought, let's go over and, you know, make sure that we're all on the same page.
Nick?
Mr. Chairman, I know that this, that the chairman is here and that the members are here, but I, so I don't want to sort of blindside them, but one of the things that the board just mentioned and jogged my memories, I believe that there will not be a recommendation or room in the budget for this town meeting for an HR department from Appropriations.
Okay.
So if there were any questions, maybe for the board, for the chairman, to speak to that. I know that's something that you deliberated on, and I think it's just a matter of time. It's just not this particular meeting, so.
Yeah, if you'd like clarification, I think the position of the Appropriations Committee was, we certainly, well, I hope you all know that we support in the creation of a Human Resources Department. In fact, we've advocated for, for that position. We just felt that the proposal before us lacked details in any planning, and encouraged the board to kind of reevaluate that. Now, I'll freely admit that one of the things that came into our decision-making was, it was at the same time that we all found out that Nick is leaving us, and we felt that the, the leadership, not the board, it's coming out wrong. I didn't mean the board's leadership, but that the person won't be in a position to kind of follow that through. And so that lack of planning just made us a little bit uneasy. We certainly do support it, and if, and by all means, if a plan exists by fall town meeting, we do have to have that discussion with you.
Well, one thing we just discussed before you came in, Selectman Thorpe brought up, the fact that in our putting together a job description for Town Administrator, we might think about adding a few HR functions, you know, just to try to pick up a little slack of what we're missing, so. And thought that that would be a moot point if it was coming for the town, but obviously, it isn't. It might be something now to, for our thought process going forward with that job description, so. Other than that, I think we already know that, which I don't know if this has anything to do with you, but that the Capitol planning has taken over the improvements for the, you know, in their warrant item for the Town Hall, so that's not going to be a separate warrant item, I believe.
Yeah, actually, the, it's not going to be a separate warrant article, although actually, only the DPW, I guess, can pull the warrant article.
Right, right.
That's certainly not our role. But what we did was, we adjusted the Capitol budget by the amount needed to fund the first year of the project. The DPW went through and broke up the three-year project financially by year, so that we knew what to expect and anticipate for each year's cost. We've decided to fund it that way, year one improvements in year one, and year two, and so on. And particularly, year three is up in the air, because there's a lot of different options, particularly as it relates to the elevator and what could occur there. So rather than fund the money and it not be necessary now, we thought it was best to fund each year separately as we go. So the Capitol plan was adjusted by the amount needed to do that.
And as we all knew, the first years I had, really necessities for, you know, most of them are necessities for Town Hall, as far as improvements to the electrical system, et cetera, so. That's, you know, I think that's the most important of, of all of them, but.
Yeah, and I think one of the points that was made that really resonated with me was that it's our Town Hall, we're not going to get rid of the building. Now, whether the Town Office has always remained there or not remains to be seen, but the building will always be our Town Hall, and we'll always have use for it and functions within it. So to invest in its longevity and maintenance is certainly a worthy investment.
Okay, very good. Any other, anything else?
Yeah, through the chair?
Yep.
Eric, how much are the taxes, who'd go off if this is passed, that's the town lead?
If the town, the budget is?
If the budget is passed.
Is it all?
Isn't 71 cents?
Yeah, roughly, I think it's like 71 cents, yeah.
Which, which would mean what to the taxpayer? Say, like, on a $200,000?
71 cents per thousand. So if the $200,000 is the...
$142?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
It's $142 on $200,000?
Yeah, yeah.
There's, there's nothing else we can cut to not raise the taxes at all?
Sure, we can always cut. The problem with cutting is those, cutting is, represents a loss of services. I think we are, certainly have worked hard over the last couple of years to become as lean as possible, and I think each year, we get better and better at that. Of course, you can always cut, but you tell me what services would you like to cut, and we'll go to work and revise our budget. It's that, you know, you want to cut police, fire, schools, DPW, you know. We heard little feedback, and of course, we do have our public hearing coming up on the 21st. I think it's 21st. Did I get the date right?
21st.
Yeah, 21st, I believe. And that'll give the, certainly give the public an opportunity to comment on the budget and the needs of the town. But certainly, what we've heard to date is that folks typically favor maintaining the level of service that they've grown accustomed to, and that has certainly come into play in with our budget preparation this year.
Thank you. I don't think there's anything else. If you folks don't want to hang around, if you do, be our guests, but.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't leave anything unsettled.
And we don't necessarily follow Denver's rules, so you might be here a while.
Thank you.
All right, Nick, we, the LCAP policy, has that been, Selectman Thorpe was saying that that there were a couple sentences that had to be adjusted at the end of that?
There were, and I thought that, and I thought that they were.
I don't see it here, though. We never got the revised copy. That's okay. We'll do it the next one.
I knew you wanted it on there, but I wasn't really sure what it was.
Yeah, because they need, they need to see what the revision were.
The changes to the LCAP policy, there are a couple small changes. All right, we'll do that for the 28th?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. The next item is PBPC, the Request for Proposals for the 2015 District Local Technical Assistance Program Project Solicitation, round two. Nick?
Notification to the board about this, you know, possibility. It had come around back in the fall. I can tell you that traditionally, that there really hasn't been too much that seemed applicable for this. At least, that's been the, sort of the conventional wisdom. But if the board had any ideas, they're looking for ideas relative, excuse me, to any planning ahead for growth or housing, or any ideas for supporting regional services. I think the town has made use with supporting regional services, had a study for shared HR, for example. Fortunately, it didn't, wasn't really, the result wasn't quite a good fit for the town.
Sort of backfired, didn't it?
But, so if there are any ideas that the board would have, that you'd want to submit, there's a 5% in-kind matching, so it's not an out-of-pocket, but you'd have to dedicate services of staff, which could be different surveys if you, depending on whatever the idea is. If you have anything that you'd like me to work on, please let me know and I'll work on submitting it.
All right, thanks. So everyone, if you've got ideas, let, you know, get up to Nick, and we'll work on those. We took care of items 11 and 12. Item 13 is a request from the Masonic Temple for a one-day liquor license beer and wine for Saturday, May 2nd, 2015, from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. at the Masonic Hall, 43 Chestnut Street, in conjunction with a birthday party. Insurance is on file, and also for an entertainment license. So I'd like to propose a motion to approve the one-day liquor license and the entertainment license for this event at the Masonic Temple. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Next is Bordell?
Bordell, shared public health nurse. I looked into what you wanted, Angela.
Yeah.
For, let's see if, with the Maven?
Yeah.
And that's, that's run by the state, so we'll still have it even if we vote against being in this.
No, my concern was, through the chair, my concern was that, yeah, that's what I said, through the chair, I was looking at him. Is that the Maven, the, our nurse, is she doing the input to the Maven? Because we always have Maven, but it's our responsibility to input the information and update all the illnesses or contagious diseases, and there was a question on who was actually doing that. And if our nurse is doing it, then we don't need the other nurse to do it, but if...
Well, our nurse is doing it, but the other one wants to take it over. So rather than spend $979,
Yeah.
I'd rather put that into East Long Meadow.
Okay, I'm good. I'm good with that.
I'm not, I'm for getting out of that, because to me, it's, all it's where, all it is, is a another monkey on our back to pay for something that we shouldn't be paying for. Because the information we get out of that, I think we can get out of our own people here.
Okay, I'm good with that, though.
That's my, that's my own feel.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, does the board want to take a vote to not continue in the public health nurse? I know you, the board has taken one vote already, that's when the amount was much higher.
Yeah.
But does the board want to take another vote based on the $900 and some odd dollar amount?
Yeah, I'd like to entertain a motion to not participate in the shared public health nurse program.
So move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's passed. The second thing on the agenda is the rabies clinic update. On March 28th, 2015, a vaccination dog license clinic was held at Brown's. And it was a good, a real success, I guess. They vaccinated 42 dogs, vaccinated four cats, for a total of 46. Uh, vaccinated four cats for a total of forty-six, and they licensed thirty-six East Lotham Meadow, uh, dogs.
Yeah.
That represents an increase from two thousand fourteen, last fall clinic, which saw a total of thirty-three dogs and cats vaccinated and ten new licenses issued. Uh, special thanks goes out to the following, uh, without whose help this event would have not been possible, the Hoyok C.C. Vet Tech Program. Dr. Jawoski, DVM, who provided a staff clinic and a vaccine, and A.W. Brown Pet and Garden Center, who provide a location, table, chairs, and goofy gift bags for all things.
Goody gift bags. Not goofy gift bags, goody gift bags.
Well, they're kind of goofy, too.
Well, goofy, good. And, uh, you know, I'd like to thank Tom O'Connor for running that and Melissa, they did a good job with this again this year. So, uh, it was a great success again.
Yeah, through the chair. Um, I did have an opportunity to attend that, and it was very well-attended and it was very organized. Um, but you also want to congratulate our clerks, um, because two, we had two clerks there, um, that were running the registration, and they were working very diligently to get those registrations processed. And it was, I was just, not that I was expecting anything bad, but it was, I was really, it was much better than I thought it would be. So I give them many coodles.
The next thing on the agenda is community funds. How much should we eventually get, Nick?
Um, the number right, I, I don't have it right in front of me, but it was something like, we had a net total of something like seventeen thousand. I don't remember what, it was over seventeen thousand.
Other than community funds, uh, I talked to Mark Macarini on the scholarships. And I gotta call him tomorrow morning and let him know how many scholarships we got and what they were for. I know we took that extra money, we're going to put it toward the lower scholarships.
Yeah, the ones that you have proposed, yeah.
So, uh, if I could find out.
Because I know I have four, I have four, that I have proposed, and I think you have three that you have proposed.
Yeah.
Because I don't know how you're going to allocate that four hundred dollars if you're going to make another scholarship, or you're just going to add it on to what you currently have. That's up to you.
Whatever the board wants to do on it.
Yeah.
I think you...
I don't think we'd vote on anything, I think I'd discuss just adding a hundred to your, to each, to each of this, yeah.
Each one, okay.
And, uh, on the seventh, at the awards meeting, at seven o'clock at night, uh, Mark is going to present the scholarships.
Oh, I usually present ours.
Huh?
I usually present ours.
Well, yeah, well, he was going to invite the selectmen to, you know, present whatever we're presenting.
Okay.
But, uh, I was talking to Nick and we're not, we may not have the money at that time, but we can present the scholarship itself.
We can do a book or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they still have to fill out the W-nines, right? Is it W-nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you got anything else to add to that, Nick?
Just, um, so, but, just so we're clear, so the, um, Mr. Macarini will be, uh, making the decisions on behalf of the board for the recipients, is that what's going to occur?
For his, for mine, I'm doing mine.
Okay, so, I'm a little confused then. So I thought that there were five scholarships in total, and what I just heard was to add, there's the one main scholarship and four others. What I just heard the board say was to add the hundred dollars to the other four, and that there weren't additional scholarships that Selectman Gorman was, uh, proposing.
Okay, do you have that sheet that I submitted to you?
I do not.
Because it's all outlined on there, and I believe, uh, Selectman Gorman has two, and I have four.
Eric, can we have that for next meeting?
Well, I don't think mine were for scholarships.
Yeah, you did say for scholarships, and you did a scholarship and then you also did, um, uh, for the garden, to correct the, uh, not aquarium.
That was for the veterans.
Solarium.
Well, it was for the veterans.
You did veterans, too, yeah?
Okay.
And you did, you did do a scholarship.
Through the chairman, I, I, I don't have that.
All right.
Okay, I'll send it to you.
All right.
Can I get together with you tomorrow, Nick, where we can look that up and see exactly what we?
Yes, so then if the, can I ask the board then to make a contingent decision here then? Because if, I had a conversation with Selectman Gorman prior to the meeting, and the discussion was, um, it was the four, uh, the four scholarships, or the five scholarships, rather. One main one and then four others.
As far as I know.
Yeah.
There, the, there's the one thousand dollar one, which is the grand prize.
Right.
And then there are three, um, three or four sub-prizes. But then there's also, uh, uh, Selectman Gorman had chosen to give some scholarships, too. It's all on that list that I gave, and you don't have it, so I'll have to make sure you get it.
All right, we, we can discuss that and get back at the next meeting.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the next, uh, through the chairman, rather, excuse me, the next meeting being April twenty-eighth, um, will there be time to, to notify?
Because May seventh is...
Oh, is it May seventh?
Yes, May seventh.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was June seventh.
Well, I know, I'm working with Mark also, so.
If you guys can figure this out in the next couple of days, then you can, you know.
Absolutely.
Nick could tell me and I could...
Yeah, because it's written down somewhere, so.
All right.
All right.
Uh, the last thing on the agenda is no smoking signs at Heritage Park. I don't know what the flavor of the Selectman was the last meeting, but I don't think we ever voted on what we wanted to do with that. Uh, we're supposed to find out from, um, Bob Parent what it would cost for signs, I don't know if he ever...
Yeah, it's right here. Six signs, six hundred bucks, a hundred bucks a sign.
Do we need six signs now?
Yeah, there was in the, there was in the study, I was, uh, so the, the material cost per sign should be less than a hundred dollars. So assume this would include assigned hardware and treated wooden post.
The, the only thing I didn't like about this was it was a person from Springfield telling us
No.
what we should do, but they did get signatures and there were East Lotham Meadow people on it. But, um, I myself think there should be no smoking over there because you got the fishing derby, you got the, you know, kids' baseball, and it's all young kids, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So I myself think that we should go ahead with this, but, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to, um, put up no smoking signs at Heritage Park.
So moved?
One second.
Uh, discussion, uh, through the chair? Um, I don't know if we need six signs, um, that would be my only concern. I, I think we could suffice with perhaps four. Where, do we know where the six came from?
He wants two signs, he's thinking two signs in the main parking lot area by the skating shack and the playground. One at the lot opposite Stop and Shop, and one each at the ball field pavilion and rear field.
Okay.
Um, and, and also, I know for years Forest Park has had no smoking because I remember when my son was small, his coach had to sneak off and smoke next to his truck. So, so he wouldn't get caught, that's the only reason I knew there was no smoking. So, um, but I'm, you know, regardless of, I, I got the same comment about someone from out of town saying this, but regardless of that, health issues, you know, aren't, aren't town-specific, so.
Well, I agree, I agree we should have them there, but I just don't agree with someone from another town
No.
tell us what we should do and not do, yes.
Yeah, well.
I mean, they don't pay their taxes.
Did she tell us or did she make the suggestion?
Yeah.
Well, they were more or less telling us that we should.
But we're voting on it now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? None? Okay, the motion passed.
All right, you've got a couple of new items, new business. And the second one could be important to me at some point, so.
Eighteen, yeah?
Well, eighteen and nineteen, yeah.
Recycle and rebate, I don't know, you know what that's about.
Yeah, with, through the chair, um, we got, is this from the Murph? We got a, we got, because we are recycling, obviously, in town, we get a rebate based on our, on our recycling, and, uh, we got a check for nineteen thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars and one cent.
Okay, we don't have to vote on that, right?
No, no, no.
Okay. Yeah, the last item for new business here, this was thrown out just this afternoon, so. Uh, renewal of funeral director license Frank Forrest Air Force Air Smith Funeral Home, two twenty North Main Street for the year ended two thousand sixteen.
Second in line of discussion, this could be important to me at some point, so we have to pass this, so. I'm going to be heading there someday, so I just want to make sure Frank's still in business, so.
Do any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? None? Motion's passed.
All right, thanks, Bill. Next item, we have some correspondence, we got a, we did get a letter from Eric Madison, the chairman of appropriations committee, um, just regarding supplemental budgets and the items that they have, they have, um, decided to support, um, which we'll, I'll do this very briefly. The increases to the animal control budget, the funding for a full-time health inspector, increased hours for the accounting office, and funding for the first phase of the increased fire department staffing. And then, um, as we discussed, the capital projects were included, we had the, um, first phase of the town hall improvements.
Did we pass the accounting, increased hours for the accounting office?
I'm not sure.
I don't think we did.
I don't know, where they, where would they have gotten it from?
I don't know, because Tom had presented it and we hadn't passed it.
Tom?
Because that's Tom Account, oh, no, sorry, wrong person, sorry. I'm sorry.
Sarah?
I know, it's Sarah, okay. He's correct, I was wrong.
All right. And then the other item was, uh, we had a letter from a resident on Forest Hills Road discussing the, um, cracks in the streets and the ability to, to pave them and, and fill the cracks that have come about due to the inclement weather during the winter. Um, before we get to the town council, do you mind reading the meeting's invitation and reminders, or?
No, I don't, thank you. LCAT Committee meeting on Wednesday, April eighth, uh, two thousand fifteen, at three thirty AM, located at the ELCAT Studio at East Lotham Meadow High School, one eighty Maple Street. Cable Advisory Committee meeting has been moved, um, and we will let you know when that's going to be rescheduled. Do we have a date?
A proposal was the following Thursday, I haven't, but I haven't sent it out to the other members yet.
Okay, um, so that would be the sixteenth, if it happens. Annual Town Elections are on Tuesday, April fourteenth, at Burson Park Middle School, from seven AM to eight PM. Town offices will be closed on Monday, April twentieth, in observance of Patriots Day. Appropriations Committee Budget Presentation will be on Tuesday, April twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, at seven PM at the High School Auditorium, located one hundred and eighty Maple Street. Board of Selectmen Meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, at six PM, Town Hall Hearing Room. LCAT Preview of the Annual Town Meeting will be on Thursday, April thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, at six PM, LCAT Studio, one eighty Maple Street. Notice of Public Hearing from the Department of Telecommunications and Cable will be on Wednesday, May thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, at ten AM, one thousand Washington Street Hearing Room, one E, Boston, Mass. Purpose of the hearing, purpose of the hearing is to investigate charter-proposed basic service tier programming, equipment and installation rates. Annual Town Meeting will be on Monday, May eighteenth, at the East Lotham Meadow High School Auditorium at seven PM, and that's located at one eighty Maple Street.
Thank you. Next, town council? How are you, sir?
I'm great, thank you.
Eric?
I'm not going to make you reach across.
All right, thank you. I'll hit the microphone again, I jived on that. Okay, so we've got, I'm guessing twenty-two is not executive.
Correct.
Twenty-three is?
Yes.
Twenty?
Four, I don't believe it is, but I'm not sure.
Okay, that's, yeah.
I think that's just an appropriation to pay for the staffer for the, um, capital planning, um, committee. Self-pay insurance policy, I'm not clear with that.
Oh, we're tabling that?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do we table?
Number twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Uh, what's, twenty-six wouldn't be right, Affordable Care Act, is that, I thought we...
We did that, all right.
I thought we beat that to death last meeting.
I can just report to the board, the board have looked, uh, asked for additional information and a plan from, um, the accounting, the benefits administration manager, they didn't have an opportunity in the interim to work on it, so.
All right.
To a future meeting.
Okay. Uh, twenty-seven, fire department reports?
Remain, the remaining items, twenty-seven through thirty-three, I believe, would all be executive session.
Okay, so why don't we handle number twenty-two?
Oh, excuse me.
I, I believe this is on here only, um, to, some clarification, I guess, to her, uh, informed by the administrator, there were some questions apparently, but are received by the Selectman's Office regarding the, um, most recent delegation of portions of the Brown property to control or to be managed by the Friends of, um, Brown Farm. And I, I, I'm not sure beyond that really what the issues are.
Okay.
I, well, through the board, I think it's what they're going to use it for. I mean, they only want to seem to use it for horseback riding or horses, but, um, my understanding, I'm talking to other people that were on the committee, that they had other uses, including horseback riding, but they were never approached.
Is that the, the Brown Farm Committee?
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, first...
That's interesting.
First of all, the Brown Farm Committee, we have not appointed them, so we need to handle that at some point, too.
I think, uh, Selectman Thorpe is, is correct here. This is a private nonprofit corporation that's been created. The board's prior involvement with this organization was to allow them to oversee and operate the, the, um, farming plots that the board established by written agreement with them last year, or the year before last, I guess. So the, the issue that you need to be concerned with, I think, is taking portions of the Brown property and transferring control without really knowing what it is that's happening. It seemed in some of the materials that I had seen that the, uh, Friends were going to oversee uses such as four-H, using a portion of the property. So I guess that the question that comes to mind is if, if you're using municipal property for another private entity, what's the authority that exists to allow that entity to come in and use the municipal property without going through a really delineated procedure as to what's happening and whether there is any compensation being received or what the benefits, or how it's going to be structured as to who uses it and is it for the benefit of East Lotham Meadow residents only? Is it for the general public? And, you know, those questions, I think you, you should probably have the answers to, just to answer your constituents when and if they call with, with questions about what's going on.
Forget my, forgive my feebleness, but didn't we get any of those answered with the gardens? Because wouldn't the gardens have fallen under the same basic ideas?
The gardens were going to be residents, I believe, that were going to be overseeing.
Residents only?
And the expense was going, and expenses were going to be borne by the Friends, and they were going to report to you, uh, either semi-annually or quarterly as to the revenue stream and what money was going on. There was more, a little more definitive outline as to exactly what was happening and how the property was going to be used.
Sounds like we need, obviously, we have to do the same thing for this. Although it's all under the, it's in theory, all under the Friends of Brown Farm anyway, so if they could just increase their reporting
Yeah.
to the, the horses and the equestrian part that they want to do now, because I assume they're going to be, I should never assume, but...
I know, you shouldn't, but we do.
They're going to, um, you know, charge people for using these and, and...
See, and that becomes, that becomes the slippery slope, because, you know, if, if there's a revenue stream coming in, in first instance, the revenue stream at least ought to be looked at by the town as a stream that comes to the town. If it's, it's going to go to the Friends to offset costs, that's one thing, but you need to be able to know, as you did with the gardens,
The costs, yeah.
that's how it's going to work and what's going to happen, so. And I don't know specifically what the questions were, but the administrator had indicated in a general form that those were some of the issues that had, that they had fielded here in the office since the last...
Okay, we may want to get together with the Friends and, or have somebody get in touch with them and get these...
And here's, through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
That land has been sitting there dormant, and we have been asking people to do something with it. Now somebody steps up to do something with it, and now they have a problem?
No, I think the issue is that it's municipal property, and if the municipality isn't going to be the one that's going to drive it, they need to at least understand what is happening on the property and know that its use is for the benefit of the residents or for the purposes of the Community Preservation Act, rather than just abrogate control to a private entity and say, "Here, you can run it." I mean, it, it's fine to let this group have control of the property as long as it's not detrimental to the interests of the community, as far as what's being allowed out there, or at odds with what the community wants to do. But the perspective of this particular aspect is when you're going to let a third party, a non-municipal third party, you don't have... a non-municipal third party, you don't have control, use municipal property, there's a whole host of requirements that we have to jump through. If we were gonna lease that, there's a whole host of things we'd have to jump through in order to get that done. And I would suggest that just because the Brown is a, is a nonprofit and have laudable purposes, and they're working for the benefit of that piece and for the community...
Doesn't mean they don't have the answer to us as to what they're doing with the funds and...
Yeah, they still need to, they still need to tell, you still need to be the ones who are saying, "We approve."
Right.
There needs to be a municipal oversight of the actions that are there, so that anything that's going on there, the community or some designated representative of the community knows, so that they can report to the board, or the board, or the report comes directly to the board from the entity as to what's happening. So if a question comes up, you have the answers without having to...
Right.
What, through the board? What disturbs me, Jim, is one person come in and wanted a, a certain thing done with that property, but then when I get calls on my house, I find out there's a committee...
Yes.
Which I knew nothing about, I don't know how the committee got formed.
It's a corporation.
So, so they told me, I, they were never asked anything about this, it was the one person that just came and...
Here are, from the Secretary of State's office, those aren't the officers and directors of the corporation, and I assume there are maybe other members, but...
Mr. Chairman, if I could address council?
Yeah.
I, I think council, that what's being discussed here are two different entities. The one that, known as Friends of Brown Farm, which is the one that you've given the Selectman information on, but then another committee that has been appointed by the Board of Selectmen, although I've searched our files to try and establish the date of that appointment, but, which consists of various members either of departments or...
She's gonna go.
Other, other, other board members.
So that's the entity that you're talking about, the municipal entity that exists to oversee the, the operation of the, of the Brown property.
Or to come forth with, the general, I, come, come forth with ideas for the use of the property.
That's different, that's different than that. That's the friend, that, that documentation is the Friends of the Brown property established in order, and they've done everything they're supposed to do.
This, well, I looked at this, but this is another committee that supposedly, and the person who came to me, you know, was a rec, on a rec department, he told me he's on the committee. He presented a plan to me, and he goes, you know, "How come we weren't notified," or... I go, "I, I have, I have no knowledge of another committee, or any committee."
There was, there was, my recollection is that there...
He said the Selectman appointed it.
There was a committee...
Before I was here.
Before, I was before your tenure, I think, Mr. Gorman, there was a committee established to look at the property, and, see, if I could digress for a second, when you purchased the, the property with community preservation funds, the, the town was unclear as to exactly what the scope of the use of that property was gonna be. It was gonna be within the purview of the various uses that community preservation property can be put to, but there hadn't been a, a definitive decision as to whether it was going to be recreation, whether it was gonna be affordable housing, whether it was gonna be, you know, open space, or some combination of all of those. And so the board, recognizing that they really needed at some point to determine how this property was gonna be used for the best interest of the town, I don't recall who it was, but I think they appointed a committee to, to look at it and to come back and report as to what they thought were the appropriate uses that might be considered by the, by the board. And that's the last that I know about that, that committee, but there was one, I believe, established.
All right, so in any event, we should get some questions answered as to...
To have them come in.
Yeah, but more, we, we gotta have them come in, not just one person.
Well, you're getting, well, through the board.
Yeah.
What I could do, Paul, is the person that talked to me, come, have this committee come in and...
Okay. Yeah, that's a good idea.
I mean, because I'm like, I, I was kind of dumbfounded when they approached me on the panel.
Yeah, because you assume that, that people coming in are representing that...